Call a meeting to order?
Welcome to Nixa City Hall. This video is going to provide you with an overview of how the city of Nixa conducts city council meetings. We encourage everyone to attend and participate in city council meetings. This is part of how democracy works at the local level. Listening to the perspectives of subject matter experts, city residents, and other community members helps our elected leaders make more informed decisions. Before we start the meeting, let's review some of council's rules of order. These rules help us make sure our meetings are orderly and efficient while protecting the ability of everyone to have an opportunity to speak. Please be respectful of the person speaking and hold your own comments until it is your turn to speak. Presenters are invited by the council to provide information during the meeting to the council. These are informational presentations only, and nothing will be voted on at the time of the presentation. Presenters are not time limited. There are two times when all other visitors will be able to speak to council. The first is during the visitor's section of the agenda, and the second is during any public hearing regarding an agenda item. During the visitor's section, anyone may speak to council about any topic, whereas the public hearings regarding specific agenda items allow you to make comments for council to consider before they make a decision on that topic. Whether you wish to speak during any public hearing or the visitor's section, the following rules of order will apply. One, only one person should speak at a time. Be respectful of the person speaking and wait to speak until it is your turn. Two, anyone speaking must do so from the podium and speak into the microphone. Three, you must first state your name and provide your address in writing to the city clerk before beginning your comments. Four, all speakers will be given five minutes to make their comments to the council. The mayor or council may have additional questions for speakers after this five-minute period. Five, all comments should be addressed to the mayor and council. Six, if you have questions about existing city processes, programs, or policies, or if you need assistance from staff on any issue, please contact City Hall during normal business hours, and we'll be happy to assist you or answer any questions you may have at that time. The public hearing is designed to provide the public an opportunity to provide testimony and information to the mayor and council regarding the decisions they may be considering. Keep in mind this meeting will be recorded and livestreamed with video and audio. Therefore, all comments relevant to this meeting must be spoken into a microphone; otherwise, video viewers will not be able to hear you. In the case of a closed session or technical difficulties, some meetings or portions of meetings may not actually be recorded or streamed. The use of cell phones during council meetings is discouraged, so please silence all devices now. Thank you for watching, and thank you for engaging with the city of Nixa. The meeting will begin shortly.
Here.
Matt Ogden.
Here.
Sean Lucas.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Zorn Vess.
Here.
Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one speaker tonight for our presentations. Marshall Decker from Decker and De Good will be giving our 2022 audit report.
Yes, Marshall Decker with Firm Decker and De Good. And you got a blue packet up there. You do not have to take a test. I will go through it. Any questions you have, just stop me at any time, and I'll answer your questions. First three pages are the opinion pages, and the way that's broken down is the first two paragraphs is what we call clean opinion, unqualified, unmodified opinion. And it just says, "All the statements covered government activities, business type, and major funds of the city of Nixa as of December 31, 2022 were a proper presentation, reflection of your financial position." Okay? Then it has basis for the opinion. Do you accept auditing standards? If you get into grants, that's do you accept the government auditing standards, GAGAS, we get these acronyms. But then next two paragraphs, it recites management's responsibilities for helping with ensuring the accuracy of the statements. And then page two, a couple years ago, they added this extra, "Our responsibilities," and we've always done this. I was, first year, I told everybody, I said, "Don't worry, we've always covered this." And down at the bottom, it talks about going concern. That's far from what Nixa has to worry about. I think, two years through the COVID, there were some towns that actually ran out of money on ropes. So the auditors, if they were what are called going concern, they had to conclude that in opinion, but that kind of cropped up during that time period. And then page three, that long paragraph says, "The MDNA letter, the budget information and schedules for pension plans are included in the back." On the budget, you amended the budget, or the budget was within the authorized expenditures, so there's no state law, there's no bindings or any problems with that. As far as the highlights, I'm sure you don't want to understand the why they're different and the whys and wherefore. But your governmental funds, you find out on page 19. And the general fund now, years ago, we'd have park police. Some of the funds were separated, showing individually, but everything, all that's grouped into general, with exception of street. So your general fund showed 10,225,398 in revenue, 12,579,820 in expenditures. You have what we call a transfer in fee of lieu, the million 171,765. Loan proceeds fall below the line, so it decreased overall 517,247 and went down. And this statement is pretty well cash in, cash out kind of statement, with some adjustments for receivables. But as far as where you need to be on a general fund, if you have three months to six months balance, you're in excellent shape. So that would be 6,250, six months, 3,075 would be three months. And on the back, in the back, all these notes, page 52, it spells out how much money you've set aside in reserves for rainy day. And see there on the general fund, you've set back 3,255,132. So that's good cash management, good sound financial operations. Street, 3,412,465, expenditures 3,015,172, plus 397,293, brought you up to 3,671,038. Street, on page 52, you've set back 509,538. Street is, how much should that be? That depends on what projects you have going on. You have a good balance there as compared to most, 3.6 million. What is that, 3.6 miles? It looks good until you start doing overlays, and it can go fast, but that's still, that's a great balance for a street fund. Your other funds, they show up, well, you would call a profit and loss statement. Your water, sewer, and electric is on page 22. I'm not going to go through all those numbers, but as far as net gain, water work showed a 1,499,019. Wastewater showed a million 147,889, and electric 4,168,821. Now, if I'm sitting where you're sitting, what I want to look at is the next page, statement cash flow. And that's basically, it's a money in, money out statement. And what you look, what you want to see there is, did our cash increase, decrease? How's our cash working? And on the, each of the water, sewer, electric, each one showed a positive cash increase. Water, 1,285,872. Wastewater, 531,151, and electric 3,651,483. So the question that comes up in a lot of towns, are our rates adequate? Yes, when you have cash flow positive. And also the cash flow as far as operations, all the balances are six months plus. And usually on an operate on a utility, you'd expect at least like two months because the money's consistent, flowing in, flowing out. Okay? So all those were good. The other thing you always want to spot is up there, net cash provided by operations that, 1 to the fifth line down there, those totals. If you're studying that, you want to look at debt payment and make sure your cash flow always covers any debt payment, principal, and interest. As long as you've got that covered, you're in good shape. The capital outlay because of debt issues, you can have big numbers, there are money in and out, but the one thing for sure, cash flow from operations is covering the debt payment, and usually giving you, for most places, an extra $20,000 to $100,000 cash for pumps, lift stations, things that break, that you have to pay out of cash flow. You wouldn't necessarily do bond issues on those, but they happen from time to time. The notes for clean opinion, you have all those 18, 20 pages of notes to financial statements, they have to be included. It goes policy, cash, depreciation schedule, long-term debt, loggers, and other pertinent items. Okay? On your loggers, page 49 is a worksheet. Now, the loggers is a June 30 year-end, yours is December, so those beginning, ending dates are different, but it's within the time scope to include them. Column A is if people retire, how much money do you have to have in the account to cover retirement? Column B is what you have invested, and the key there is you're always looking at A minus B is a greater number. So your cash invested is 162,509 above the liability. So that's rock along just fine. Okay? I think that's, that's all the main highlights. You have a loose leaf management letter, but everything's operating fine. Jennifer, staff's doing a good job on your accounting. There is an MDNA letter there, and I'll let Jennifer explain that one. Supposedly, it makes understanding financially easier, but I don't think so. But it has to be in there for a proper presentation, so we do include it. And then she'll submit this for the act for which we received the award last year and should do the same this year. Bottom line, the city of Nixa is in strong financial position. So if you take this up to Washington DC and explain how to do that, I'd be happy. Any questions you have? It's kind of overwhelming, so I always say, anytime you want to call me at the office, ask me a question, I will get back with you. There's a lot of numbers.
No questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Once you guys have a chance to digest all of this, feel free to reach out to Jennifer. That's a lot of information. Yeah, they call Jennifer. Okay. And we will open up our visitor's section. Do you have any?
Ashley Copley. Hi, I'm Ashley Copley with Nixa Public Schools, and can I invite Brandon, Jason, and Drew Douglas up as well? So my job at the school is Director of Student Services, and part of our strategic plan is community and family partnerships, and we couldn't think of a better partnership than the city of Nixa and Christian County Library. So we would like to present our One Nixa, One Read to you, and I will let these guys share a little bit as well.
I'm Brandon, I'm the branch manager here at the Nixa branch of the Christian County Library. And yeah, we're really excited to partner with the schools and the city on this initiative this July. It will be the One Nixa, One Read initiative, where we're encouraging everybody in the community to read the same book and then come together at different book-themed events at the library, also sponsored by the city. Our kickoff for this is going to be on June 29 at the Nixa Branch Library, 6 to 8 p.m. And the book that we're going to be reading is Wonder by RJ Palacio. And this is to encourage community togetherness, kindness, understanding, all those good qualities.
Yeah, so as they said, we're going to start with a kickoff at the library, and we're going to finish with a movie in the park on July 26 with the movie that's based on the book that we're all reading. And we're looking forward to it, and I think it's a great partnership between the three organizations in the city, and we're looking for more partnerships. So if there's other businesses or other entities that want to partner with us, maybe donate funds that could be used towards buying more books that we can give away to families that could participate without any cost, or help fund things like the rights to be able to show the film in the park, things like that, then we are certainly looking and open to partnerships for those kinds of sponsorship opportunities. So any questions you guys might have for us about the program?
So the program runs from June 29 to July 26? So you start on that day and end on that day?
Correct.
Okay. It's a good book.
And then we'll have, some of the programs that we're going to have are like weekly book discussions at the library, and we'll also livestream these on Facebook for people who might be traveling or who can't make it to the branch. And then, like Drew mentioned, we're going to have the movie in the park at the end. The kickoff is going to have giveaways for the books, an arts and crafts event at the library, a performance by CC Rhythm, which is part of CC Links at the library as well. So.
We did put together a Facebook page that you're welcome to join. It's One Nixa, One Read, and it'll be managed by the communication departments from all of our respected entities. We like to post questions on the Facebook page, just get people thinking, but the message of the book is kindness. And the three of us took about six different books. We spent four weeks reading over the books, seeing what would be the best one, and when we came back to the table, we all three said Wonder. So we think it's a great one to kick this off, and hopefully it's something that can continue.
Ashley, could you email me kind of what you're looking for for sponsorships?
Sure.
And if you could do it tonight, that would be handy. I'm actually, I found out earlier today that I'm speaking at the Chamber Luncheon tomorrow, so I could.
Oh, perfect.
I need to fill some time in there, so.
Yep. We can do that.
I can bring that up.
Okay.
From there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you guys are all going to read, right?
There's an audible version too.
I know, I've already found it, actually.
That's what I need.
Perfect, all right. No one else signed up? Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Good, all right. Then I shall close the visitor's section. All right, we will move on to our first reading of Council Bill 2023-23.
First reading Council Bill Number 2023-23, An Ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa Declaring the Necessity of Acquiring by Condemnation Certain Property Rights Over, Under, and Through Certain Property for the Purpose of Constructing and Maintaining Stormwater Infrastructure as Part of the Cherry Street Stormwater Project and Authorizing Certain City Officials to Do All Things Necessary or Convenient to Carry Out the Terms and Intent of this ordinance.
Mayor Giddens, council, good evening. This ordinance is in regards to the Cherry Streets Stormwater Project. In 2020, we started this project with engineering, and since that time, the first phase of this project has been completed with all easements and construction done to approximately 308 Missouri Street. Since that time, staff has worked on acquiring the next phase of the project easements and trying to get that ready for construction in 2023. We've run into a hurdle at 301 North Missouri Street. We have, in a year's time, we have sent out three different certified mails. We've stopped by the resident on many different occasions, trying to make contact. We have luckily been able to make face-to-face contact twice now since those letters were sent out, but our fears are, the resident has failed to return or acknowledge any of our requests, you know, to obtain these needed easements for this project. This project is one that starts at Rice Street and goes all the way up to the junior high on North Street. It is designed to alleviate flooding and erosion in the area. We've had a lot of complaints from different residents in the past, you know, with one resident even having floodwaters strong enough and an amount enough to break in their back door to their house. So at this time, in order to continue this beneficial project, staff is requesting passage of this ordinance to allow for the condemnation of the attached easements at 310 North Missouri Avenue.
I remember we discussed this. How long would you think, once the project starts on this property, how long will we be on the property doing the work?
Most likely, we could be through the property in just a couple of weeks. It doesn't take a whole lot of time to dig in and place the pipe and then do the grade work to finish that up.
Got you. Sorry, I remember you answered that before, but I just kind of forgot. Any other questions? Thank you. We will open up the public hearing, if anyone would like to speak on this matter. We will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? All right, moving forward. On to the resolutions. Resolution Number 2023-20.
Resolution Number 2023-20, A Resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa Authorizing the City Administrator to Apply for and Accept a Transportation Alternative Brokerage Provided by the Ozark Transportation Organization to Fund Alternative Transportation.
Mayor and council? This grant opportunity would allow staff to apply for and accept if awarded. Grant funds totaling in an amount of $880,239 for a sidewalk or pedestrian pathway, a project that would go from Summit Elementary to the Cheyenne Valley subdivision. This project would also, in the future, tie in to the North Street project that we are having engineered at this time, and then complete a trailer sidewalk system all through that side of town, from Main Street all the way down North Street, past the center and to those schools and subdivision. This is an 80/20% cost share, with the city's portion of the project ending up being $176,047.80. It is something that was identified in the strategic plan, and it is staff's recommendation that council allow for the submittal of this grant and acceptance if awarded.
Any questions?
Cheyenne Valley, that subdivision that's going in right behind Summit and?
No, it's to the south of it.
To the south of it. Because it says, it says on North Street, I'm trying to figure out.
So we receive a lot of complaints on this one because the school buses don't run to there, and the kids have no access to walk there.
I'm just trying to pinpoint, because it says subdivision on North Street, so.
I totally meant south.
Corner of North and Cheyenne.
It's north of 14, though, so there's that.
Well, yeah, it's south.
Yeah, where North Street crosses Cheyenne, that would actually be the location where the pedestrian path would come out. It would cross North Street and then go.
Okay.
Back up to Cheyenne and then to Summit.
All right, I'm good.
And then mayor and council as well, we're considering using ARPA funds potentially for that grant match, as we've held back some ARPA funds to potentially fund some future grant opportunities for infrastructure. This would be one that staff has identified as a possibility to use ARPA funds for that match.
The design of the sidewalk, were we looking at doing something a little bit larger for bikes and pedestrians?
Yeah, the estimate that we put together is for a 10-foot wide multi-use path or trail.
Perfect. Cool. Any other questions? Thank you very much, sir. All right, we will open up the public hearing. All right, close the public hearing. Any other questions? Could I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Darlene, seconded by Sean Lucas. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? There we go. Moving on to Resolution 2023-21.
Resolution Number 2023-21, A Resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa Authorizing the City Administrator to Apply for and Accept a Bulletproof Partner Grant Provided by the Bureau of Justice Assistance to Reimburse a Portion of the Cost of Purchased Bulletproof Vests.
Mayor, council, on an annual basis, we apply for a bulletproof vest grant through the Bureau of Justice Assistance. This grant will reimburse the department for up to 50% of the cost of a vest, and I say up to 50% because the vest costs have increased over the years, and so there is a cap, so we're not maybe realizing exactly 50%, but depending on the vest cost, they could go up to 50% of reimbursement for those. For fiscal year 2023, we are anticipating a request of $22,659.78, and we anticipate a maximum reimbursement of $11,329.80. These vests will, this money will be used to buy new vests and replace vests for existing officers and for officers who, if we have turnover, for example, and we have to buy vests for those officers as well. So in essence, it covers all of our vest costs that we incur throughout the year. By doing this, it helps us with our budget for this perpetual cost that is ongoing for the life of the officer or the career of the officer. If you have any questions, I'm available.
How many vests does $22,000 get?
That's going to, well, at about $1,000 apiece, 22.
That's some good math, thank you.
I can tell you that when I started, they were about $400 or $500 apiece, and, you know, over the course of 20 years, they've gone up to almost $1,000 apiece.
Do you know what the max is? I know you put in your, at 50%, but.
So right now, the last time I checked, it was they would reimburse up to, I think, around $800 or $900, and so we're exceeding that, and so we won't see that true 50%, per se, if we're buying a $1,000 vest. So I was hoping that they would change that, where of course, because it's been the same for years, and I was hoping that there would be some sort of adjustment for that maximum outlay that they would reimburse for it.
Any other questions? We will open up the public hearing. We will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? Accept a motion?
I'll motion.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Ogden, and we'll give this one to Mr. Vest since it's first. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, Resolution 2023-22.
Resolution Number 2023-22, A Resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa Authorizing the City Administrator to Apply for and Accept an Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Grant Provided by the Ozarks Transportation Organization to Fund Level Two Electric Vehicle Charging Stations by Various City Locations.
Mayor and council, I do believe the word for the day is grant. I too am up here requesting authorization to apply for grant funds from the OTO. Similar to the pedestrian infrastructure funds that Jeff was speaking about earlier, the OTO also is opening up a grant cycle for funds through the Carbon Reduction Act to allow for the installation of Level Two electric vehicle charging stations throughout the community. Staff has identified three locations in which we would like to apply for funds. One, here at City Hall. Two, at the community center. And the third site is the municipal parking lot in downtown Nixa. In all three locations, there will be four charging stations provided, so four parking spots would be available for use by EV vehicles. The grant cycle does require that a minimum of four charging stations be provided at any given location. So in the spirit of trying to spread them out throughout the community on various sites, we have chosen to apply for three locations with four charging stations at each location. The funds we are applying for is in the amount of $133,287. This too is an 80/20 grant, so if funds were awarded, the city would receive $106,629.60 towards the installation of the EV charging equipment.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Where would they go at each place? Like, here at City Hall, where would you put them?
Sure, at City Hall here, we're looking at a location in the northeast corner of the parking lot, which would be on this side of the building, at the back corner. At the community center, we've identified a location that will be just to the south and west of the pool facility, kind of between the pool and the pavilion, if you know where both those areas are at. We've identified a location that we can easily serve with electric over there, and then in the downtown parking lot, it will be located on the south side of the parking lot adjacent to Elm Street.
Okay, thank you.
And then, mayor and council, I'll mention on this one as well, we're considering utilizing ARPA funds for that match as well, again, for the same reasons as before, where we're holding back money for infrastructure improvements, and this would fit that. So, if awarded the grant, we're going to consider using ARPA funds for that match.
And that amount would be in the, $26,657 would be our match towards it.
Is there one of these per parking spot, or does one go in between the splits off to two?
Actually, each location, yeah, no, 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 great question, though. At each location, there'll be two chargers. Each charger has a plug port on both sides of it, so there'll be four charging ports, but just two actual physical pedestal chargers.
Perfect.
Do these have to be maintained yearly, annually, or do you not have to have any maintenance to them at all?
We'll have to maintain them. Honestly, Mrs. Morris, this is new infrastructure for us, so we'll be on a learning curve, but yes, there will be maintenance involved, and most likely, we'll be looking at purchasing a unit that comes with a maintenance agreement.
Awesome.
Perfect. Anything else?
Will there be security cameras and things on these as well?
I know that the Nixa City Hall facility has, does have cameras currently on the parking lot. Matt, does the community center? No, so the community center in downtown will not have video security.
I was just curious, because we've had vandalism at the park already, and I can kind of see something happening with those.
Could we change what we're looking at for the cameras for the playground?
It might be possible. We'll have to look at that on that location, so that's the first I'm hearing of the location, so we'd have to look and explore that location on what we could do camera-wise.
Okay.
Perfect.
Sounds like we could certainly look into that. Grant funds can't be utilized for it, I'm sorry.
Downtown, on the municipal parking lot, I'm not sure about, I mean, unless we could...
Yeah, I don't know how...
Mark Hartzock or something, and see if he wouldn't mind throwing one up for us.
Yeah, we could certainly look into it. Camera infrastructure would not be available as an eligible item for the grant cycle, so we could look at it outside of the grant.
Just curious.
One other thing, it's because it is a competitive grant, there's no guarantee we'd get all three of these sites, and how staff has ranked these in hierarchy, the one at the municipal parking lot would be the first one out if we only get two, so that would kind of solve the camera issue for down there for now, but anyway, I just, I wanted you to know that. It is competitive, and we do know there are a couple of other entities in OTO that are, have some pretty big projects that they're going for, so, you know, we'll just have to see how it goes.
Yeah, we're going to put our best foot forward, but we do know they have, they only have a maximum funds of $750,000, so we're going to be, we're going to be in a tight, a tight field for competitiveness for the funds. So, as Doug mentioned, we have ranked them in order, if they would like to fund a partial project instead of a full project, we've asked for them to rank them as City Hall, Community Center, and then Downtown Parking Lot.
Perfect. Anything else?
I'm assuming that the money is just for the chargers and not for, like, the infrastructure to hook up the chargers? You said we have, okay.
I'm sorry, yes, yes, the grant funds can be utilized for the chargers themselves, any parking lot work that needs to be done, which in our case, we don't have any because the parking lots are existing, and then the electric infrastructure necessary to extend to the chargers. So, we're rolling, what you see here in the funds includes the chargers themselves, and then all the infrastructure necessary to get electric to those locations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
We will open up the public hearing.
I was saving my five minutes for time like this. My name's Ron Sanders, 976 Glen Oaks Drive, yeah. How many police cars do we have that are EV?
Zero.
Do we plan on having any anytime soon?
I don't know.
Would it be functional? Would it be wise to have them? I don't know, it could be a rhetorical question unless you want to answer.
Oh, you...
At this time, we have no plans. We did attempt to procure one last year, and we weren't able to do that, and so at this point, we haven't explored that option again because they're so hard to come by.
I don't know if they'd be functional for a police function. What about the utilities department? Do they have any EV vehicles?
Yeah, we are looking at utilities and actually City Hall.
So, then the next question I would have is, how many gas stations does the city own? City doesn't own any gas stations, right? So, why are we getting into the business of providing, you know, business, where we're taking over a business, that these chargers should be out in private businesses where they would make the money? Anybody who uses them is going to pay, I think the equivalent right now is, I think it comes out to almost 60 cents or 70 cents a mile to drive whenever you charge it outside of your home, otherwise it goes down to like 15 or 20 cents a mile. But now, we're getting into where we're providing basically a gas station for EVs. You know, we don't own any gas stations for all the other cars, so why are we getting into private business as a city? You know, we don't have any cars, we don't have any vehicles, the city is going to be charging themselves. These don't have a purpose for charging city utility vehicles or anything like that. This is actually a product that you guys are getting ready to put on the market as a city to the public, so why don't we start buying up some of the gas stations, too? And, you know, supply people with bonbons and hostess cakes and stuff like that. Why doesn't the city get into that? Is it just because they're dangling a grant in front of us that we have to take it? The city north of us took a grant a while back for police. They had a whole bunch of extra police for a couple of years, but that grant had some strings tied to it, and whenever the grant ran out of juice, they had to make a choice, do we keep our older police or do we keep the newer police? The grant said, all the new police that you hired with this grant, you have to keep, so if you have to cut any, if you don't have any money for it, you have to cut the people that have been there the longest. Grants like this often have those kinds of strings attached, so do these, do these grants have any strings like that attached? Do they run out and eventually cost the city more? And I guess the other question that I would ask you to think about is, why are we getting into private business? It's been a very big concern of mine, but it seems like the thing to do is for the city to just get involved in everything that private business is supposed to be doing. Next thing you know, we're going to be running daycares, we're going to be running cafeterias, you know, we're going to be running gyms. Oh, we already have a gym that we're running as a city. You know, what comes next? Is there a grant that's going to come down and say, hey, if you open up daycare for three and four-year-olds, which I think is on the agenda for, you know, the federal government, are you going to take the grant and start opening up daycares and put the private daycares out of business? This is where it starts. We're getting ready to put in a whole bunch of electric charging spots on city property to sell to the public, and I just don't think that that's the job of the city. You don't own any gas stations, why not? If that's a lucrative business that the city should be involved in, like with an EV charger, then maybe we should buy a couple of gas stations and make the city a whole bunch more But I think everybody knows what that's called, and it's not appropriate for our type of government. It would be over in some eastern countries that used to exist and everything like that, but not here. It's not the government's place to get into private business, and this is like one of the first steps of breaking down that barrier, because we're going to be providing a service just like a gas station to people who own EVs, and that's wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? Anything else from staff? Nope. All right, I will accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
First by Mr. Ogden, second by Mr. Lucas, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on to resolution 2023-23.
A resolution, resolution number 2023-23, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa, authorizing the sale and distribution of alcohol on city property and authorizing a multi-day event for the proposed 2023 Sucker Days special event.
Mayor, council, good evening. Section 16-325 of Nixa City Code, am I on the right one? Yeah, requires that any special event that extends across multiple days or involves the sale and distribution of alcohol or wine must receive authorization from city council first. The 2023 Nixa Sucker Days is scheduled for May 19th through May 21st, and is planned to involve the use of public property for the sale of, and distribution of beer and wine during the event. Section 16-325 does provide for several conditions that must be satisfied for the sale or distribution of alcohol. There's eight listed there, I'm not going to read them all to you, but of note is that they must be, the sale must be within a designated area, usually specified by a fence, and there should be security personnel checking IDs at that entry, and also that beer and wine shall not be distributed or sold after 10:30 PM. Included with the memo was some supplemental information from the chamber about the event. Of note on there is that they do plan to have a VIP party on Thursday, so they will be requesting that the parking lot on Main Street, South Main Street and Elm be closed Wednesday afternoon. The supplemental information says 7:00 PM for that, but it is later requesting that be moved up to 3:00 PM, so that way they have enough time to set up the beer garden in time for the VIP event before the special event. Okay. The applicant has addressed the requirements of section 16-325 in the information packet for Sucker Days, and staff does recommend approval.
Any questions for Mr. Godby? We will open up the public hearing. We will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? Have the businesses in the area been, like, are they okay with that parking lot down there being closed that much earlier?
I have not heard any objection at this point.
It was the same schedule last year, starting on Thursday night.
But you said shut it down on Wednesday.
They set it down on Wednesday to get tents and stuff put up.
That's what it was last year, too. Okay. Good enough for me. All right, can I get a motion?
Don't make a motion. Second.
Got that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, resolution 2023-24.
Resolution number 2023-24, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa, granting a permit to Nixa Public Schools to authorize the display of fireworks for the 2023 high school football season.
Mayor, council, good evening. So, the Nixa Public Schools is requesting to conduct public displays of fireworks at all Nixa football home games this season. Section 16-198 of Nixa City Code provides for the issuance of permits for these types of displays on certain conditions and with the authorization of city council. The dates of the home games that they would like to display the fireworks is listed in the memo up on the screen there. Again, this will all take place at home football games at Eagle Stadium. The displays will be conducted by AM Pyrotechnics, on behalf of the school district, they were the company or an entity that provided this service last season. They are properly licensed and competent to conduct such displays. Nixa Public School District will have to comply with applicable state and other local regulations, including requirements of the International Fire Code as administered by the Nixa Fire Protection District. Nixa Public Schools has provided proof of AM Pyrotechnics liability insurance, and staff recommends approval.
What about playoff games? Would this include that, or would they have to have a special permit for that if they make it to the playoffs and it's home games?
I don't necessarily know when the playoffs start, but this would be limited to October 20th as the last one, and they do intend to, intend to display them after every touchdown and after every game.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Godby. We will open up the public hearing. We will close the public hearing. Anything else? Anything for staff?
We will look into the playoff thing, because I think that came up last year as well, so we will, we'll visit with the school about that and see what the plan is and get back with you.
I think there might have been some misia rules against that as well, because if you shoot them off for one team, you have to do them for both.
Yeah, I think that was the thing. I just remember us having quite a big discussion last year, but we'll revisit that, but as far as this, we're confident in moving forward with this today.
Fair enough. All right, could I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second, Mr. Ogden with the first. Well, I guess we'll give it to you this time. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, resolution 2023-25.
Resolution number 2023-25, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa, authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Blevins Asphalt Construction Company Incorporated for the expansion of the roundabout at the intersection of Greg Road and Northview Road, and for the expansion of a portion of Northview Road.
Mayor and council, two projects on the street department capital improvement project list are the expansion of the roundabout at Greg and Northview, as well as the expansion of Northview westward past Old Wilderness. The roundabout expansion would allow for more deflection with traffic, aiding in speeding and other issues that are known to happen in that area. Project B, the expansion of Northview Road westward to Old Wilderness, would allow for a turn lane to be added to be able to provide stacking to turn into Old Wilderness and access through there. It would also provide a sidewalk connection. The sidewalk currently on Northview Road ends there at Tractor Supply. This would allow a connection going south toward the Cox facility. The projects were bidding conjunction with each other due to the size and the proximity of the projects. It was our intent to do this to allow for better bids. The combined budget for these projects is $835,804. A bid was received from Blevins Asphalt Construction Company in the amount of $734,083.53, so this is within budget. It is staff's recommendation that council pass this resolution, allowing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Blevins Asphalt Construction Company for the price of $734,083.53. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this matter. Nope. We will close the public hearing. Any other questions from council?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Darlene, silence your phone.
I have my phone in silence. I have my phone on silent.
Anything else from staff? I will accept a motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Lucas made the first. Ms. Graham with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution 2023-26.
Resolution number 2023-26, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa, authorizing the city administrator to apply for and accept grant funding provided by the Missouri Department of Social Services.
Mayor, Council, this grant opportunity was actually passed along to us by the Christian County Prosecuting Attorney's Office. They made us aware of this particular grant opportunity and it is made possible by ARPA money as well. They are specifically looking at crimes against children, in particular sex crimes against children, and how they can help facilitate those investigations and give the information and opportunity for us to solve those types of crimes. We have identified several pieces of equipment that would be useful in those investigations. Those include a forensic light source, a camera system, which is a 360-degree camera that photographs the scene and does measurements all in one, evidence drying cabinets, a laptop that goes along with something called a data pilot, which is a piece of software we use to capture and retain digital evidence on things like telephones, laptops, tablets, et cetera. All of that information or all that, those things would come to $46,616.90. And so this is a 100% funded grant and that's what we'll be applying for. There's no guarantee that we would get all those things. We might get some of those things. It could be partially funded. One thing that is not in the actual memo is that part of the grant, not a requirement, but one thing that they look at is our willingness to share those resources with our partner agencies across the area. And so we would certainly be doing that and make those things available, all of these pieces of equipment available to the partnering agencies within the county and even outside the county for that matter. This particular grant, if, if we were to get it, we would, we would get those things in place as soon as we could. And it would also help us with our participation in the Child Sex Crimes Task Force that we're currently participating in with the Christian County Sheriff's Department, all other law enforcement agencies within the county and the Christian County Prosecuting Attorney's Office. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Is there any specific training involved to use this equipment?
Yeah, there's, there's, there'll be some minimal training that would be required, but if it became an issue where as they, you know, there was very specific training to use that piece of equipment, we would send our people to assist with the investigation and then we would help them in that manner.
So along with that, so would there only be certain people who could use it or can only detectives use it or?
Well, if, if the agency has someone trained, properly trained in the use of it, we would, they can just borrow the equipment. We could loan it out to them. If they didn't have anyone trained per se, like I said, we would just send our person to that location to operate the equipment for them.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief. Alright, we will open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak. We will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? Anything else from staff? Alright, I will accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Ms. Graham, second by, I guess we'll give it to Mr. Ogden. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright. One thing that I did want to say is I do appreciate all the work that staff does to find us those grants, but, and thank you, Mr. Sanders. I think it is good to look into those to make sure there's not any other strings attached, but I think so far we do a pretty good job of that. And then to address the, you know, the charging stations, I do feel like that turns into more of a convenience for the community and our staff. If they decide to get electric vehicles, we have a place where they can charge them while they're at work. And it is, I think it is responsible with taxpayers' money to get as many grants for stuff like that as possible. But I do, I do see your point. I do understand. I think it's something that we can, you know, as far as the, the price to charge, something we can look at as being, you know, keep it at our cost to make it, you know, as long as we can pay for it and we're not losing money on them, you know, not charging extra and just passing on our cost as a benefit to the community, that's something we can discuss. Assuming we do get those, we can discuss that at a later date. But you brought up some good points, so thank you. And do we have anything else from council?
I was gonna ask about, since we did talk about fireworks tonight, last year we did an amendment to our ordinance for last year fireworks because 4th of July was on a Monday, so we allowed for fireworks to be shot off on the 3rd. I'd like for us to look at that this year because 4th of July is gonna be on a Tuesday this year. So we need to kind of maybe look at something for long-term going forward for the fireworks on the 4th of July. As it relates to that. And if you guys want to talk about any ideas tonight, we could probably spitball those.
And for discussion purposes, as we did last year, we did the day before, so we included July 4th, or 3rd and 4th. Would that be something you would want us to consider moving forward more permanently? Or would you want to look at something a little more loose, a little more tight? I'm just looking for some direction for staff.
Probably do the weekend before. I'm assuming a lot of people will get together probably at Sunday, not during the work week, but. I.
So last year, just to kind of add some color to those that weren't here, last year, we looked at that. We talked about that, having it the whole weekend before the 4th. And that just opens it up for a lot of, a lot of extra work for our fire department, our police department, stuff like that. The other part of that we looked at is typically it's only been on the 4th. So if, let's say it falls on a Wednesday, do we let it go the weekend before or the weekend after? And I think we decided to try to set something where we could be consistent going forward where if it falls during the week, allowing it on the 3rd. Because people will be off typically on the 4th, but they're not off on the 5th unless it falls on a Sunday. So that's kind of why we were looking at, that's why last year we allowed for it to be on the 3rd and not the whole weekend.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So direction, I, for direction, me personally, I think I would be okay with us looking at something, just allowing it on the 3rd if it falls on a Monday through a Friday, through a Thursday or something like that. Because if it's on a Friday or Saturday or even Sunday, people are usually off on those days or the day after if it's on a Sunday. So.
Okay. So leave it, we could look at something, leaving it on the 4th on the weekend if it falls on a Friday or Saturday, but Sunday through Thursday, make it 3rd and 4th. Is that the suggestion?
Or just Monday through, yeah, we could look at that or just Monday through Thursday if it falls on Monday through Thursday.
I said Sunday, I mean Monday.
Yeah, and that way if it lands on the 4th, 5th, the Friday, Saturday or Sunday, we just have it on the 4th. Or just keep it less confusing and just make it the 3rd and 4th.
I was gonna say that. I'm confused listening to you.
Right. Right. So we could just make it less confusing and just say the 3rd and 4th.
Every year, regardless of when it is, 3rd and 4th, that's when you can set off fireworks.
It happens anyway. It usually starts a week before around my house, so.
If you did, even if you opened it up to Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, they're gonna shoot them off on Friday.
Right.
Oh, yeah, 100%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll bring something back with 3rd and 4th.
Perfect. Anything else from council? Anything else from staff?
Yep. I want to give the mayor and council an update on the Regional Broadband Initiative, or in other words, the RBI Board, as we call it for short. And that's the board that we participate in with other municipalities and counties, both in Green County and Christian County. Just as an update, we have received our preliminary numbers for the infrastructure cost for the City of Nixa to build out infrastructure for fiber to the home. That's, again, preliminarily, we're looking at about $11.7 million to build that backbone, which is actually much cheaper than we anticipated that number to come back. Costs have really come down over the last several years. Although it is a lot of money, we really anticipate it to be much higher than that. So we're very pleased to hear that number. You know, so where do we go from here? And I'll tell you that our feasibility study that we partnered with those organizations on, we will have that feasibility study, I think they're planning on May 31st, I believe, is when they're going to present that to all the entities. So we'll have that full study available after that and we will provide that to council at a future meeting. But I just wanted to report, things are going very well, you know, with, with that feasibility study and the group or the regional approach that we're looking at, I think is still the correct and the right way to go. I think it's really garnering a lot of attention at the state level for potential grant funding in the future. So you, you know, you can look at that $11.7 million, but if we can get some of the federal and state monies that are coming down through the grant programs, that will be significantly less and could potentially be a very, very doable project. And I think we all know and understand how important broadband or high-speed internet is to not only the businesses, but people within their homes and especially the more people that are working at home now. So I just want to report things are going very well. We're very excited at the direction we're headed and, and the Regional Broadband Initiative Board is, again, we're just very excited to move forward, so.
So did you say $11.7 million would be just for the city or is that for all of it?
No, that's just for the City of Nixa's $11.7. Yep. Yep. Obviously be significantly higher for the counties and, yeah. Yeah, 200 and some million, I think. It's, it's way up there for the whole thing. But, yep, a very expensive project. But again, I think it's, it's much closer to being doable now than it was a few years ago, so.
Anything else from staff? I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. We'll do these two over here. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Good. Thank you.